Okay, we do need to conclude our special meeting of the board. And I did want to let you all know, you don't have to stay if you don't want to. I know it's the last week of classes and so you're more than welcome to listen to this discussion, but we did want to let you know that you're also welcome to slip off if that is better in your schedule. So there is no intended to be taken or expectation. Okay, trustee Givens is traveling today and so he is calling in on his own. So while he is getting situated on the call-in, just to go through our agenda, this is a special meeting called by the board and the point, the specific agenda on this meeting is to discuss the Student Success Center project and the construction of the Student Success. Hey trustee Givens, can you hear us?
Uh, barely.
Okay. We'll do our best to repeat to be sure that you can hear as we talk. So the first is if there is any public comment, and I did not receive any public comment cards, there being none, we will move on. Just as a way of introduction, as you all are aware, at the board meeting this fall, we spoke about the fact that in May, the contractor for the Student Success Center provided notice to the college that the delivery of the completed building, substantially complete building would be 110 days late. At that point, we advised and directed the team to work with the contractor and determine how we could expedite the completion. Completion was supposed to be substantial completion the end of November, November 28th, 29th. So obviously, for those of you who have been on the Gibbs campus anytime recently, the building is not yet to that point. So we, last week, the contractor, in the time period, and Ms. Wright is going to go through this more specifically, but I just wanted to tell you why I thought it was important that we talked about it today. Last week, the contractor did deliver a revised completion schedule that was not a scheduled to expedite completion. It didn't take, it didn't close the gap on that 110 days. It actually is a longer schedule and anticipated substantial completion would be March-April timeframe. So the contract provides for certain remedies and paths to get this building done. Just so you all know, Dr. Williams and I, over the past, well, several months, but specifically in the past month, we've been working to a point of, we just want the building done as quickly as possible and, but we're to the point now where there are some options. And Dr. Williams and I thought that it would be better if the board collectively heard those options directly from Diana Wright, who's been handling the construction project, and as well Ty Thompson with Mills Paschke, who is the College outside council on construction issues and was called in May when we first received the first notice of delay and has been working with the college team since then on this topic. So with that, if that was an appropriate introduction, I will turn it over to Ms. Wright.
So as you very well said, I'm here to provide you an update.
Right, just pick up a little louder because I got a lot of background. I'm gonna be providing an update on Joseph H. Langs to the Success Center construction.
And I just wanted to get started with the actual project funding. This project was funded for $25 million and we received the funding through PICO Appropriations over a three-year course from 2016 all the way to the last payment of $3.5 million, which was received at the end of September of 2018. The college also matched 25% of the total $25 million by $5 million through state funding and SODA funds. So that's how we got all of the funding. Just wanted to provide a breakdown of the overall project funds. The $25 million was, in essence, put in place to not only construct a new Student Success building, but also to demolish the east and the west wings of the administration building. And it also provided funding for utility relocation and moves that were required, staff moves that were required onto other campus buildings to accommodate for the new construction. So after the three different budgets were set, the remaining balance to construct the Student Success Center project was $23,986,967.
What's this thing you got?
Twenty-three million, nine eighty-six, nine sixty-seven.
That was what was left to build the building?
No, that was the Student Center project budget.
Okay, that includes furniture and all the other things?
Yes, I'm gonna get to that now.
Yes.
So when you look at the total project budget, typically a project budget is broken out into two sections. One is the overall project budget outside of the construction budget. And this accounts for fees such as architect and engineering fees, pre-construction services, payment for building code official, testing and services, furniture, and we also included an owner's contingency within our project budget. Okay? And this is again, outside of the construction budget. The next line item is just gonna show you what we originally had for the construction budget, which was set at $19 million. And I'll explain in a second why it increased. And the construction budget is put together to account for general conditions, subcontracts, design bill contingency, and we also had an owner's contingency within the construction budget. We had an owner's contingency within the construction budget and within the project budget because we were trying to be fiscally responsible in case there was any project overruns. We can obviously pay for them, okay? The construction was broken out into three phases. As I said before, this was done due to a distribution of state funding. It were given, the state funding came to us on a three-year increment. And so we felt that it was beneficial for us to break it into three phases. The first phase was the underground facilities and parking lot improvements. The second phase included foundation and structural steel. And then the third phase includes where we are now, which is the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, flooring, basically all of the building finishes. The original substantial completion date was November 28th of 2019 with a final completion of December 24th of 2019. The construction budget, as you can see, increased to $19,315,424. That was following a change order for owner requested items. So in essence, what we did is that we moved funding from our project budget owner's contingency into our construction budget to account for owner requested scopes, changes in scope, for example, for the cafe that we're building within the building, okay? This is probably a little hard to read, but I just wanted to give you an overview of the project timeline. And within the project timeline, you'll see items that were approved by the board. So in 2016, Lima was selected as a design build contractor for the Student Success project. The board also approved $1.297 million for the design and pre-construction services. In August of 2017, the board approved schematic design and Phase 1 GMP was set for $1.56 million. In October of 2017, the board approved Phase 2 GMP for $4.7 million. And in August of 2018, the board approved the final county for Phase 1. And what that did was Phase 1 came in under budget, right? So we had set a GMP for $4,776,000. The final county came in, came in short of that. And so it decreased the GMP by $414,000. I see a typo there. So in October of 2018, Lima then submits a GMP for $12,657,000, which, for Phase 3, which we rejected. And the reason why we rejected it was because after reviewing all of the scopes for all of the subcontractors, it was, it was noted that there wasn't enough funding, that the $12 million was just not gonna get to the, to the, to the finish line. And so what we proposed in the November 2018 board meeting, it was to redistribute savings from Phase 1 and Phase 2, totaling $663,000 into Phase 3. So there were savings in Phase 1 and Phase 2, which we then redistributed into Phase 3 to increase this total Phase 3 GMP to $13,320,000. This then made all of his, the total construction budget equal to $19 million, which is what's written in his contract. Okay? In January of 2019, we called a special face-to-face meeting with the contractor to discuss procurement delays. We were concerned with the, with how quickly the, well, how slow the, we were procuring the contracts with the subcontractors, and we wanted to make sure that we were still gonna be able to deliver the project within the November timeframe. After this meeting, and consequently, we always have face-to-face meetings on a weekly basis, so we're constantly discussing the process of the project. In March of 2019, the project schedule that we received showed a completion date of November 28th of 2019. In May 15th, we had another face-to-face meeting, which was requested by SBC to discuss the project and discuss all, everything that was regarding to the project and the timeline as well. During this meeting, that's when we were informed that the contract, the project was gonna be delivered 110 days late. It was a surprise to us. The week before, we had a face-to-face meeting and the contractor said that they would be delivering the project on time. So therefore, on May 20th, we received a letter from Lima requesting a 110-day delay and also requesting an additional $210,000 to be distributed to them for, to cover their general conditions. And when we received the letter, they basically stated that they would reduce the hardscape package by that amount. That way, their total GMP didn't have to increase. In June of 2019, the June 1st, we received a new substantial completion date of February 20th of 2020 and then the final of March 12th. So the substantial completion date now changed to February 20th. In August of 2019, Lima requests $180,000 from the college, again, to cover their general conditions costs past the substantial completion date of November 28th. And on September 10th, a recovery schedule was finally received, decreasing the delay to 100 days from 110 days. And so it reduced the substantial completion date by 10 days. And at that time, the contractor requested an additional $138,692. In November 2019, then we received now an updated substantial completion date, pushing the date out to March 12th, substantial completion date to March 12th of 2020, with a final in April 7th of 2020. So that gives you pretty much an overview of some of the items that occurred during the project. So as I discussed, the substantial completion date was March 12th of 2020. The most recent final completion is April 7th of 2020. This is, this also shows you how much money is left in the project or the balance to finish is about $6.3 million. The average payment per month is about $418,000. We did however, receive the largest payment request in this last month for $1.3 million. We just received it yesterday. And this includes direct purchase payments. So the contractor is requesting additional funds of $135,000 to account for general conditions costs through substantial completion. And what I did here in this slide is that we basically took a look at what the approximate cost of that would be per week and then figured that would be an extension of 15 days. That is my presentation.
Thank you, Diana. At this point, I would like to introduce Ty Thompson with Mills Paschke. And Ty's going to recap from the legal side of things, what he and Ms. Gardner and her team have been working with Ms. Wright and her team on. If she can stand here so we can get a better view.
Well, thank you very much. My name's Ty Thompson. I have the pleasure of representing the college with respect to this particular, this particular issue. I was called in, in June, shortly after Mr. Miles and Diana received the 110-day extension request.
I can't hear whoever's on.
I'm sorry, sorry. Mr. Givens, can you hear me now?
Yeah, who's speaking?
Ty Thompson.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So I was brought in to look not only at the contract, but also to advise the college with respect to the options that it has pursuant to both the contract and the performance bond that was issued that he purchased that effectively guarantees not only the timely completion of the work by the contractor, but also that the work is performed in accordance with contract documents. So what we did was, in July of 2019, we served a letter on both Lima and its surety advising it that it was potentially, that we were considering declaring a contractor default and requested that there be a meeting to be held within 10 days from the receipt of that letter to discuss the contractor's performance. We ultimately, due to scheduling, had that meeting in August. The surety participated via telephone. The contractor appeared also through its council in person, along with representatives from the college, from the general counsel's office, along with Ms. Wright and Ms. Gardner. The promises that were made at that meeting suggested that although the project would not be completed this semester, he made assurances that the work would be done quicker than he envisioned the 110 days would be. Here we are, six months later, nothing has changed. In fact, it's getting worse. You have specific options under the contract and this bond. And the options include terminating the contractor for cause. Cause is defined as if the contractor is delayed or consistently repeatedly fails to perform its work in accordance with the contract, you have the right to terminate it for cause. You also have the right pursuant to the bond that the college purchased to insist that the surety step in and perform the contractor's work in the event that you do formally declare default in terminating the contractor for cause. The options are that. If the college decides to pay this.
So there are no more, there you're telling me there are no more options except for those two things?
Well, no, there are several, there are more than just terminating and looking to the contract, the contractor surety perform.
Okay, so what are the other options? Is there more options?
Well, the other option is to.
But I believe, if I believe, let me tell you, I've been looking into this for longer. And honestly, I believe that there's errors on both sides. And you haven't shown me or anybody else in writing this thing that you say the contractor agreed to. Do you have it in writing that you agreed to at that meeting, that you would do those things?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
You said that at a meeting you went to, the contractor said that you would do certain things at that rate. You didn't do it that way.
Well, the only thing we have in writing from the contractor is that he is delayed 110 days. And we received a recovery schedule.
So we don't have anything. You, you, you just portrayed to the board that the contractor came and said something, but as our attorney, you didn't get it in writing? That he agreed to these things?
We didn't agree to the 110 days.
No, no, you said that the contractor came and said at the meeting that you were at. I'm listening to this, and you just said it. I mean, it's too mystical, very mystical, that you said that the contractor came and said that he would meet certain deadlines, yes, he was behind, that he would meet certain, he would meet certain deadlines and try to catch up, or something to that extent. You didn't get that in writing.
We did not get anything. We did not get anything in writing from him with respect to.
Okay, so you don't have anything in writing, but you're telling me to believe that somebody came to a meeting and said they would try to do certain things, but we didn't get that in writing. This is what I'm talking about.
Doctor.
I've been watching this back and forth, back and forth, it's becoming a dairies. We don't have anything to go on.
During that meeting, one of the.
Which is everybody's word that keeps saying that this person's doing that. When I reviewed it, when I told about the witness, when I reviewed it, that's why we had too many people that slowed down the process, that were actually examining for pages. It looks like, I mean, we've just added more layers and layers and layers and layers on this stake of the project, but I really believe we slowed down the process. It'd be very critical, isn't it? So, I mean, the board can do whatever they want to do, but I just don't, I mean, I don't think we're, we're anywhere here where we say we are. We don't have anything in writing. We said we're telling you to be in the time date and go to surety bond and all of the other stuff, but I don't have any capacity or words other than, I wanna see something in writing. What the contractor said he would do, if he had a meeting, that somebody would do certain things in writing, that doesn't matter to me.
So there was about six of us in the room. I did write the meeting minutes, recollecting everything that occurred during the meeting and at the meeting.
They were planning on the plan, if you're right, they need to plan and be prepared.
He provided. He provided a recovery schedule of 10 days. That's when he reduced his, all his days from 110.
So you're reporting that he said he would do.
Deborah, trustee Givens, please let Ms. Wright finish. What she said was, we received in writing a notice of delay of 110.
Trustee, trustee, now if you go ahead and, I think this is a hard watch, honestly. Go ahead and do whatever you like to. I totally disagree with the directions of the class without going in or not in chairs. And so, I gave you lots of things to tell on for finish. I'm not waiting anymore time on this. I think we have screwed up. I think the contractor screwed up. But we don't ever want to say we messed up on you. And I think that is so unfair, that we're talking about the wrong way. I'm done.
Are you hanging up or would you like me to respond?
I didn't say I was hanging up. I'm done with any comments or anything else. Because obviously, you as a chair don't want me to say anything. We don't want me to finish. I'm already sitting in there for a part of me here. And then you have to be there to hear her when she starts talking, and I can't hear all of that.
That's why I.
But you're not taking, yeah, but you're not taking that as a consideration, not in here. Come on now. That's just me after one day here.
Trustee Givens, we deserve some respect. If you could see us sitting leaning over the speakerphone intending for you to hear so we could respond to your question, that you are not giving either anybody the opportunity to respond. With that opportunity, Ms. Wright will explain to you that we've received in writing from the contractor, a notice of delay of 110 days, a month later, a recovery schedule that stated 100 days, and six weeks later, a schedule that provides for a continued delay. So yes, there has been in writing, three different occasions outlining from the contractor his proposed delays.
Can I hear the rest of our options?
Right.
We never finished with what potential options are. Let's go in that direction.
Thank you. So there are options. One of the options is to pay the contractor extended general conditions because of its delay on this project. That's one option. The second option is to begin assessing liquidated delay damages against the contractor, which are $600 per day from November 28th until the contractor achieves substantial completion. That's your right under the contract. Third option is to terminate the contractor because it is in default under the contract as the contract defines it to be, and look to the surety to step in and try to facilitate this project's timely and proper completion. Or we do nothing and continue on with this contractor. Those are the four options that you have. If you decide to default and terminate this contractor, the surety then has to step in with reasonable promptness, either tender the contractor back, two, go out and obtain bids to perform the work and tender that new contractor, three, elect to perform the work by itself through its independent contractors or agents. In my experience, that is always the surety just uses the asset that it has, which is the principal or its contractor. Or four, effectively elect to do nothing, okay? That's what the surety has the right to do. And in my experience, the surety does not elect to do nothing, it's going to try to facilitate this project's completion, okay? Those are your options.
And just to be clear, based on the estimate of the general condition monthly dollars in the proposed schedule that was delivered last week or 10 days ago, we're estimating, and this is one of the reasons why we needed to talk about this, because there would be a proposed increase in the GMP by approximately $315,000, $320,000 to facilitate the completion.
Correct, although the contractor's only requesting for $130,000 at this moment,
So the contractor's requesting $135,000 to complete the project by March 10th.
Correct.
But our estimate is that because general condition payments would have been completed this month based on the original contract, it would actually cost $320,000.
Did you say that our cost is $600 a day?
Yeah, so the liquidated delay damage provision that was approved upon the college's acceptance of the GMP, which is $600 per day until the project achieves substantial completion. And then upon achieving substantial completion, the contractor has 30 days within which to achieve final completion. And if it fails to achieve that final completion within that period of time, you have a $300 per day liquidated delay damage.
But to clarify, correct me if I'm wrong, and I only, I had this conversation on Friday, that's the only reason I'm a little bit more of a speed. The $600 is the liquidated damages provision that the college would assess the contractor for the delay. So beginning November 28th through whenever the contractor completes it, that $600 a day would be deducted from the payments made to the contractor.
I mean, to me, that's a whole lot more motivating than trying to get somebody else to look at the project and it's gonna make him move much quicker if it's costing him money every day, right? There's no way we're gonna make March 4th if we fire Lima and go try to find somebody else to get the project done. So all we're doing is further delaying it.
Exactly.
I think that's the reason why we wanted to have this conversation. I mean, we have a lot of competing priorities, right? We have the need to deliver the building to the campus. That's the number one priority, is we need to get this building finished for the students, for the employees that have been displaced, for student services. So that's the number one priority, right? Then we have, we recently just completed this week a state audit of these types of issues. The state is going around to each campus, looking at construction projects and construction issues. We know that this is a hot button with Department of Education. So is it fiscally wise from a policy standpoint to increase the GMP to get the building completed? Or would it be better to work within the contract? And I felt like those were some policy questions. And I, I felt like those were some policy questions that we needed to give guidance to the administration on. This is normally an administrative decision that, you know, the team would do on their own, and we would just end up getting a building at some point, but I felt in light of the state's concerns with construction, the need to deliver the building more quickly, that we really needed to have a discussion of what we think is the most motivating way to get this done, that gives the college the best protection as well.
So I'm not a lawyer, there's lots of you in here. Is it possible to hold him to that $135,000 increase regardless of what the cost is, and have the $600 a day for every day?
So that's a good question. But put yourself in the shoes of somebody that makes decisions that's unbiased, a judge or a jury. You look at this and go, if the college decides to pay the contractor additional general conditions because of its own delay, while at the same time trying to assess liquidated delay damages against it, it just doesn't work. I don't think you can do that. And my understanding is that the contractor is threatening inability to continue to proceed with its work after the end of the year.
Have, have we sat down face to face?
Yes.
You and him?
Yes.
While I'm watching, the same people that were on the board, we've been behind talking 10 times on this building, this building, and all, every time that I've known, we have had a contractor come to the board. But in this particular situation, we have lawyers and everybody else, board, we don't have a contractor coming to talk to us. And it's not been the top of the board, that the board needs.
I, I see what you're saying, Trustee Givens. You're saying in the past, when this has occurred, the contractor was also at the meeting?
No, the contractor always has been inviting to the board, he's been playing what's going on. Here's the thing, that's, one way or another, we've come to Congress, this has passed, everything we've done, everything we've done. But Dr. Williams, I'm just rejoicing, I'm, and I find, I wouldn't know how much money we spent on legal things related to this situation, because I can hear that, that's all I care about, just me.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Williams, you wanna talk about your, between Ms. Wright and you, your conversations with the --
Yes.
We were, I asked the team to be pretty clinical, because I didn't want to get into a situation where they were portraying their impression of what happened at a meeting with the contractor. I thought it was more important for us to just look at the facts on the table and say, what are we gonna do to get a building done? But we can certainly, I don't think Lima was not invited to participate in this meeting. Honestly, that, it wouldn't have crossed my mind if you're considering to declare somebody and default to the contract to do that, knowing, knowing that the team has already had several conversations with him. So I apologize in order for that.
I just wonder if he should have the opportunity, because Debra and Wright, that's, I mean, that's what I have seen in the past, with everything else, contractors were given the opportunity to --
The last four presidents in our world, we have all, we have all the other contracts. Some of you have, tell us, Williams, why not?
But regardless of what, like you said, it's our chance to be on their side, and we haven't had the opportunity to be on their side.
I know, I've met with the contractor several times, and if, if we want to bring him here, we can definitely do that.
Mr. Givens, what is it that we've done on our side to delay this project?
Trustee Givens.
Yeah, do you, trusty self, talk to me?
What you mentioned earlier, that we're responsible for any of the delays.
Trustee, if you, if you would ask for the documents related to, related to how payment happens, various and significant happens, and there are reviewers. The contractor asked me at the very beginning, that there be one reviewer. Instead, we put two reviewers. So therefore, that was a delay over time. Because now two people have to look over the same thing. In fact, when you do a design bill contract, this contract was not a design bill contract. It was not treated such, we bid at the design bill, they did, we did not use a design bill contract, that's number one. We were flawed from the very word of God. Dr. Williams, tonight, we're in for that, because Dr. Law and Brian Miles changed the contract, I just did. And there are some protections to protect the college. But once you figure out your design bill, we, we really, we really, I feel like we're slowing down the process. The design bill needs that we bring back architecture, and bring back all of these plans, and bring, and they go to work. And we give them seven, which is a $21 million building, for example. Trustee, sometimes you give them $7 million, a complete physical schedule, that is $7 million, and then this writer, whoever's talking on it, and the college, and they will give them another $7 million, they complete, there's a $7 million there, and then they're finishing the last $7 million. But there's this $21 million budget. We did not operate that way. We had so many checks and balances, that we have checked ourselves in some cases. I saw where, I asked Dr. Williams to tell you, I brought it to attention. We had two people checking the same thing over and over and over again, to the effect that sometimes, it was a $21 million delay, and then, you know, we have all these delays, we just add more.
And Trustee Givens, you're --
And now you've got lawyers, and we have lawyers involved, and then, so, I mean, we probably spent more money on legal things than we have gotten out with $135,000, no question that can do.
Trustee Givens.
This is where, I say, this is where things get crazy, it doesn't make any sense. I mean, this is where we, we are not getting approvals of the patch that are valid, and we spent money on legal things, when we should have some points. Some will be done in the past, in the history of the college, I've known, bring the contractor in, meet the board, and we ask them, hey, what is going on? Why can't we get this building done? We did not do that in the case, no.
Trustee Givens, I wanted to --
There's a delay, there's a delay, trusty, point.
Trustee Givens, when, when I did go back to look at the two individuals who were reviewing the documents, you were exactly right, that there were two people reviewing the documents coming in or the requests, but in the contract, it gives the college so many days to respond, and we have always responded way in advance of the timeline that was given to us to respond. So while we had the two reviewers, it did not cause a delay, we did not miss a beat on the timeline of having to respond according to our agreement.
But Dr. Williams, this is what we did to real men. I know that you said y'all got it back in time, but the amount of time that it took, when I had my forensic, I personally looked at it, a better forensic analysis based on construction, even with that slow down, the amount of time that it takes to buy products and do other things, and also to get the stuff in place, because we took, because it's not more amount of time than we needed to, and that holds up the contract, and then most people in place, and other things that they would be advised to. So that's what we were pretty different.
So our average time was about six days total to respond, which is pretty good, but we'll, we'll bring --
But there were, but there were places in there that were probably 23 and 25 days, and I can go point to specific.
So for the board --
The one person looked at it, the next person looked at it, and then we got, there was 14, and then we did 21 by the time person got that.
So for the purpose of the board, as I says, this is generally not a decision at all that would come to the board. So in the past, if contractors have come and negotiated with the board these types of additional payments, the only reason this would come to the board is if the board wants to give direction, that it would prefer to increase the GMP by, by the 135. But I will put in asterisk that Mr. Thompson and Ms. Wright feel like the 135 won't be sufficient, based on their calculations, it will really be more like the 315 or 320 to get to that end date. So that's one question, does the board want to increase the GMP by 135 for the contractor's request to complete the project 150 days late? And rather than any of the other remedies, would the board want to increase the GMP by the $316,000-ish that the staff feels like would be the sufficient number that would actually pay for the timeline that was given to date? Would the board want to instead declare a default and ask for liquidated damages of $600 a day in an attempt to motivate the contractor to complete faster than what the most recent schedule he provided is? Or does the board want to declare, not the board, but direct the staff to support declaring a default, terminating the contract, asking the surety to come in, which as Ms. Bello pointed out, certainly will cause more delays, but will the project be delivered in, on budget at that point? So I think, and that's, I think the question with the surety issue is, we have a GMP now, if you want, I boiled it down in my mind, if you want the GMP to be what the GMP is, then really the path is either liquidated damages or surety. Regardless of the time, if you're okay spending extra money, then we would need to direct the team to come back with an amendment to the GMP that the contractor would also agree to.
So I have to go, and I've been warned that.
Yes, I know.
I don't feel like I got an answer to, can we hold him to $135,000 regardless of what the cost of the project? And I would like you guys to continue to discuss, I'm sorry I won't hear the answer unless you want me to call from my cell phone on the way to my lunch appointment, but why it doesn't make sense, to kind of meet in the middle. Hey, we'll give you the $135,000 additional that you're asking for, but we're gonna start charging you $600 a day, so get it done. I, I don't understand why that doesn't make sense, but again, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm sure you guys are right, but I would like there to be more discussion around that, because to me, that's, that's a meet in the middle, right? We're getting compensated for the missed days that are costing us money and causing us to not want to further prolong the project by doing the surety route. But at the same time, understanding that he needs additional funds to be able to complete the job. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know if, from a timing standpoint, can we bring it back? I mean, we're in a, I'm looking over at Ms. Gardner and Ms. Wright and Mr. Thompson, I don't know from a further delay on our part standpoint, I mean, the contractor needs to be on the job, and if he's advised the team that he doesn't have money to pay general conditions past December, we don't have time to bring it back.
Well, what I was going to, what I was going to propose, that probably doesn't work, I was gonna say that we bring this back in January when Mr. Givens is here, perhaps we invite Lima, if they want to talk to the board directly, and then at that point in time, we decide which direction we want to go in for the next few months, and encourage them between now and that meeting to figure out a way to sharpen their pencil, get the timeline cut, and make some moves before we then vote in January with which direction we want to go to. But if that's not an option, then we have to move now.
I'll second that. If that was a motion, I'd, I'd, I'd take it.
It wasn't, it wasn't a motion yet, Mr. Givens, but I guess, I guess I'm curious if we can figure out a way to make that a possibility. That gives Lima a few weeks to figure out how to bump the time up, that gives us a couple more weeks to dig in. If they want to step in front of the board, if it's okay with the chair, they can come and speak their piece, but then at that meeting, the board can decide whether we're gonna start charging liquidated damages, whether we want to increase the budget on anything, and whether we can move the timeline.
I'm looking over at our professional team as to the pros and cons of that.
So the contract requires that if the contractor wants an extension of contract time or additional monies, he's got to present a change order request. I don't believe that's ever been done here. I think that any statements that were made, certainly not to me, but any statements that were made that suggest that if, if the contractor's not paid certain sums of money by the end of next week or the end of the year, that it's no longer going to be able to perform work, I don't know that to be the case. Maybe it's innuendo, who knows? But, you know, recognize that to the extent that the board wishes to pay this contractor more money on account of its own delays on this project, you're gonna be in a tough situation to then later hold it in default for failure to timely perform its work. And you're also gonna have a very difficult time to assess liquidated delay damages. You can't, you don't give money and then start taking money away from somebody that's already saying, I don't have enough money to complete. So that's, that's that, from my perspective.
Well, then, I would put the motion on the table, because I'm not at a place right now where I'm gonna vote to give Lima any additional funding at this point in time. So I would move that we table this till January, we invite Lima to that meeting, we encourage them to continue to diligently work on this project, and perhaps find ways to cut that timeline down. And then at the next meeting in January, we decide, and right now, I'm leaning towards a default, and I'm leaning towards liquidated damages daily, because I think money is a motivating factor to move quicker. But I will give them the benefit of the doubt, if they want to come and speak to us, we can each, as board members, dig in a little more over the next few weeks, and we can go from there. Adam Chair, I don't know if that makes sense in one motion, but that's, that would be my recommendation.
There's a table, or a motion on the table, and a second, all in favor, or any more conversation? I'm looking at Trustee Kidwell.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Debra, do you?
Did you vote, Debra?
Yes, aye.
Okay.
All right.
Very good. So I would ask whether both, perhaps from Suzanne and Mr. Thompson's office to Lima's attorney, and from Ms. Wright to Lima, that the expectation in January is going to be a realistic timeline and recovery schedule and budget, because I think the last, I was very vocal last year when we moved our Phase 1 and 2 savings to Phase 3, that I was not supportive of increasing GMPs because of non-specific reasons. I, I, that's just, all the party, whether it was a traditional design bill contract or not, that are, that statement means absolutely nothing, Mr. Givens, when all the parties sat down, reviewed a contract, and signed a contract, and have been working from the same contract from day one. And so whether it was traditional or not, it has no bearing about what people's expectations were. The expectation is, when you sign a contract, you perform. And so my expectation in January is going to be that we have a specific recovery schedule, a specific budget, and one ask for a number, and if that number's 138, or 325, or whatever, we need to note it.
Or zero.
Or zero, which would, you know, go a long way with the state and the board, I would think. So, okay? Is that as good?
No, that's okay.
Does that give you all enough direction?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we will, unless there's any other comments, we will adjourn.
Thank you.